Welcome back to this session of the COVID-19 Oversight Hearing of the Public Accountability Committee. We have Sean Morrissey, the Deputy CEO of the Australian Association, Mr John Green, the Director of Liquor and Policing at the Australian Hotels Association, Mr Michael Rodriguez, the Chair of the Nighttime Industries Association, and then Mr Carl Schlottauer. Sorry, Carl, how do I pronounce your surname? I should have done this earlier.
Schlothauer.
Oh, Schlothauer, sorry, Carl, I apologise. Carl Schlothauer, the President of the Independent Bars Association. Could each of you please start by taking either an oath or an affirmation, and then I'll invite each, after that, a short opening address. And Carl, given I butchered your surname, maybe you could kick it off for us.
I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thanks. John or Sean?
Thank you, Chair. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
And mine, John Green, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Michael?
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you all for attending. Did you want to start with a brief opening address? And we might just go in the same order. Carl?
Thank you, Chair. The Independent Bars Association of New South Wales represents the small bar sector, including some of the most influential bars in Australia and the world. We thank the committee for the opportunity to provide our statement today. Many of our members have reopened since the lockdown and are now operating with reduced trading hours and capacity. Our outer-city members are enjoying the work-from-home trade, but many, if not all, of our members in the CBD are doing it very tough due to the restrictions across many industries resulting in less people visiting the city for work and play. Throughout the pandemic, the New South Wales Government has sought to understand the challenges facing the industry and has acted quickly to implement changes to provide time of support. And for this, we are grateful. We understand each day brings a new set of challenges and the playbook has been written in real time. This inquiry, as I understand it, is designed to catch issues with the government processes and solutions in response to the pandemic and identify areas for improvement. Removing the regulations to allow takeaway liquor sales for small bars was a game changer and allowed many of our members to remain connected to their community during lockdown. We applaud the New South Wales Government for acting on our recommendation to allow these sales. However, the IVA was not included in consultation regarding the reopening of the hospitality venues after lockdown. From my understanding, we were originally marked not to reopen, a decision which was thankfully overturned due to a series of hurried discussions at the last minute. Small bars have largely complied with the relevant public health orders and touch wood have not been linked to any COVID clusters. Government and parliamentary committees alike have both recognised the small bars as low-impact and low-risk hospitality venues, a fact recognised by recent legislative and regulatory changes. Our higher staff-to-patient ratios mean that we are uniquely placed to monitor patient behaviour and ensure social distancing rules are closely followed. With the size of the majority of our members' venues being under 200 square metres, the one-per-four-square-metre rule means that our capacities have been reduced by 50% to 75% of our original approved capacity, resulting in revenue losses of the similar scale. This has left many of our members questioning their ongoing commercial viability. The majority of our members will be reliant on Jobkeeper for as long as the social distancing requirements remain. If the requirements remain unchanged once Jobkeeper ends, many small bars will be forced to close permanently. Similarly, the initial relief provided by payroll tax deferrals has done little to offset the revenue declines. Small bars need a base level of staff to open their doors, however, this tax acts as a disincentive for job creation or extending operating hours. The commercial tenancy relief, while welcome, does not give direction past October, and members have indicated landlords are lining up for payment and not willing to offer extended support without government intervention. Additionally, many members are exposed to onerous conditions applied by landlords under commercial tenancy arrangements because small bars are not included under the Small Business Friendly Retail Tendencies Act. The cost burden of full-grant staff wages in context of operating to a reduced capacity will mean several businesses will be forced to close permanently. During the pandemic, many members have turned to government agencies as a source of truth to seek information to remain compliant and assist with business expansion ideas. Members have struggled to have these agencies provide this advice in writing, and many feel this will lead to unnecessary complications once measures are wound back and trading returns to a new normal. I've also received regular feedback from members that authorities in charge of enforcement cannot provide direct written advice on compliance issues, and we are often encouraged to seek our own advice. The issue with this is that if our independent advice proves to be incorrect, we're the ones left wearing the fine. It has never been more important to provide small businesses with certainty and to remove the financial barriers to receiving timely advice to assist with compliance. The hospitality industry is one of the state's great employers, offering flow-on employment opportunities for many under industries that have been negatively impacted by the pandemic, such as musicians and performers, the artisans, spirit and video producers. In order to make it through to the other side of this pandemic, we need the blue-sky thinking of the state government not to be hamstrung at the local level. Creative ideas to use underutilised space are often rejected by councils with a flat no. We need more consistency in the application of health orders and regulation across the service industry. We are happy to comply with all the various new rules and be inspected by multiple regulators to ensure enforcement. We just want the same level of regulatory oversight to be applied across the service industry both day and night, because we know the battle against COVID won't be one if the focus is only on one side of the equation. But most importantly, we need a clearly articulated roadmap toward more commercially viable and sustainable social distancing rules. Further, we need the assurance of financial support if the current restrictions may remain in place beyond the end of Jobkeeper's gift to safeguard against the closure of en masse the Sydney small bars. I'd like to thank the committee again for the opportunity to share this experience today, and we look forward to the support of the Parliament to ensure small bars can make it through to the other side of the pandemic.
Thanks, Carl. Sean or John?
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, of course, I'd like to thank the committee on behalf of the AHA for the opportunity to appear on behalf of what are over 1,800 members across New South Wales, hotels and accommodation properties by a small march. First of all, I think it's very important to acknowledge in the context of this inquiry that this global pandemic has presented public health and economic challenges for societies, economies and governments around the world, the likes of which we haven't seen in living memory. And many hundreds of thousands of lives have tragically been lost as a result of that. In the context of the hotel and hospitality industry, and we, of course, represent the interests of across New South Wales and broadly the association across Australia, and who we represent today in this inquiry, I feel it's very important for this committee that we don't omit our words here. Our industry has and continues to face its darkest days as a result of this pandemic. Almost six months ago to the day, 15th of March, saw the introduction of the first round of patron capacity restrictions on hospitality venues. On the 23rd of March, our industry was effectively shut down, we know, by very limited takeaway and delivery services. And it remained that way for over two months. It was only on the 1st of June, when the patron capacity was limited to a total of 50 persons across the venue, that it became viable for a lot of venues to reconsider commencing or recommencing in-venue trade. And as it presently stands, venues are subject to a range of very stringent compliance measures, patron capacity restrictions, that are placing additional costs on business. And that is significantly limiting their capacity to trade and do business at levels anywhere near normal. These measures are, of course, critical to managing what is first and foremost a public health crisis. We do acknowledge that as an industry, and we do understand that this is the number-one priority. However, it must be recognised that these restrictions that are in place and are constantly changing have had a certain impact on the livelihoods of many of our members, and as a result of that, the many thousands of employees that are employed by our members in their venues. To give you a very brief example, 94% of hotel employees across New South Wales were without work during that shutdown period. That equates to over 70,000 people. That, of course, doesn't include the many supporting industries, such as light music performers, who continue to face a lack of work as a result of the close-down and the current trading restrictions that are in place. Now, while many of these employees have returned to work in some capacity, there is a looming job and debt cliff that faces our members and their employees as those various wage subsidy packages and support packages and grants are gradually wound down or due to be wound down in the coming months. In closing, the industry remains, as I said, fully committed to providing a safe and welcoming environment for our members, public health and number-one priority, as we hopefully emerge from the worst of this pandemic. At the same time, we do continue to look to government to provide a measured and a balanced and a clear roadmap as we emerge, hopefully, from the worst of this pandemic, out of the current trading restrictions, to allow our wonderful industry to thrive once again. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Michael?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to appear in this inquiry. I'm conscious that a number of NTIA members appearing as part of today's proceedings, and so I don't want to necessarily duplicate a number of remarks that have already been made. I refer specifically to the committee for Sydney statement this morning. James is a board member of the NTIA, and we work closely, as we do, with the Independent Bars Association, who, obviously Carl's also given his opening address. So I support the principles in both statements made already and echo some of the sentiments made by the gentleman at the AHA. Like the AHA, we understand the balancing act between the economy and public health, and for the main part are supportive of the manner in which New South Wales Government has handled the COVID crisis. I guess we have tried to contribute by identifying where people may or businesses may fall through the cracks, and it's with some disappointment that we were not able to successfully persuade New South Wales Government to follow the actions of, say, for example, Queensland in extending loans to small and medium-enterprise hospitality businesses in particular, due to their inability to seek bank debt, notwithstanding the Morrison Loan Guarantee Scheme, which, if the name did not already give it away, there was a massive hole in that by the tune of 50%. So as a result, the fear there was really that the small, medium enterprise, the premium enterprise of the business of our sector, the stuff that we love shouting about in tourism marketing campaigns, is under more significant threat. It represents a higher brand contribution to Sydney than other areas of the hospitality sector, if I'm being frank. And inevitably, now we're starting to see early signs of insolvencies and business sales, and as the AHA has correctly identified, that is only going to increase into the Jan-March quarter, in particular as government support falls away. The question quickly becomes, how do you counter that? And if you're not going to start extending further financial support, there is obviously the review of the one-in-four-square-metre rule, which, the scientific basis for that, I'm still unsure of. The rule does not impact all venues equally. For small bars in particular, it almost renders their business unviable, and in a moment of humour sees them doing such new games as human Tetris, as they try to position people across their bar in order to try and maximise the amount of trade, something that's very difficult when you have a very small space. And I would suggest, if I can, that there is a case to argue that the small bar scene in particular might be a good pilot for reduction of that ratio to one-in-two-square-metre. It moves to the question really, which I'm sure that the AHA and others will echo the sentiment, that the hospitality sector and the nighttime economy more broadly needs a target to aim at or roadmap out. And what does that look like? I don't know, but, you know, we're seeing reduced numbers of community transmission. So for example, if there was an average of three cases of community transmission over 14 days, then perhaps venues might be allowed to have patients standing, as one example. Another 14 days, no further community transmission, a reduction to one-in-two-square-metres across the board. These are discussions that I think would help the sector as it comes into its one and only chance in this year to make cash as we enter the summer. And I am conscious, of course, of proceedings in other parts of the city today, the Summer Summit and the Outdoor Dining Task Force. I mean, it's scary to think what would have happened if we did not have the Music and Arts Economy Inquiry and the City Nighttime Economy Inquiry and Lockout Inquiry, because the ambition to open our fresco is only thwarted by the inability of the city and the state to allow it to happen. And I don't think, reserve my judgement in terms of how the task force comes out of this, but what we're hearing from members is that to get to meaningful levels of our fresco dining in the current regulatory landscape is going to be very challenging in a way that's going to make any meaningful impact. I don't have much more to conclude, other than to say that, two things. One is that I would support this position that masks on public transport become compulsory. If we're looking for plans to move people into the CBD, it's one simple thing that could be done. And in that vein, much of the conversation, both in this inquiry and in the public domain, is all about the supply side of the equation, which is all fine until, for example, there's an outbreak in Victoria or New Zealand and everyone cancels their bookings in restaurants. What we need to talk more about is consumer confidence generally, is why the NTIA has launched a campaign called Check, Check, Check. You may have heard about it. It is a straight rip-off of Slip, Stop, Slap. It's Slip, Stop, Slap for Indoors, that fantastic 80s campaign that taught Aussies about new ritual behaviours they should adopt before going out in the sun. The reason I say that is that we, as a society, want to be together, and in these circumstances, we need new rituals to allow that to happen safely. And this is no more relevant particularly to the 18-35 demographic, who at that stage in their life are being disproportionately affected and impacted by the impacts of physical distancing. It's fine for me at age 45 to sit in my luxury pad in Annandale and down single malt whisky by myself, but it is not the same thing for, you know, people who are needing to be socially active, meet people and understand who they are and how they fit into a complex world. So I would just make the short observation that, as yet, we have yet to receive any support from the New South Wales Government in funding that campaign, although we have received some support from the City of Sydney and a membership base who have no funds to trade at the moment.
Thanks very much, Michael, and to all of you. I'll go to John Graham for the first set of questions, then Ms Kate Ferman, then Ms Natalie Wood.
Great, thanks, Chair, and thanks for those opening statements. So I think that's very useful. I just wanted to put to you some of the calls we've had earlier in the hearing and get a reaction from you about the various sectors you're representing. So there's been a recognition that there is now a discussion about outdoor dining. The calls we've had this morning are, it's got to be soon, it should include performance, and crucially, there's got to be some money for the sector. You've touched on that, but the $87.5 million in Victoria for outdoor dining's been referred to, the $15 million specifically music venues in Victoria's been referred to. So on those things, I'm interested in a reaction to those calls. Do you support them? And crucially, how urgent are those things? In any order, Chair, what order would you like this?
Well, I think we might start with you, Carl, and then we'll go to the AHA, and then we'll come to Michael, if that's okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I think they're critical. A lot of our members have sort of tucked away venues and that sit off laneways, so opening those spaces soon and sort of free of charge, free of, less of the restrictions involved will benefit us hugely.
AHA?
Look, I think that, yeah, obviously the time is now. This week's been extremely encouraging. We've seen the release of the 24-hour strategy, you know, we've seen the introduction of the liquor bill, we've seen today's Summer Summit down at the rocks, and of course, this year. So I think it is spring, there's an opportunity for us to act on what's been said to date. There's an opportunity for us to get moving in relation to, you know, activating our public spaces outside venues, utilising that space in and around venues, so we do it in a COVID safe way. So I say, spring is here, the time to act is now.
I don't know, I've got much more to add. I think that it's been well expressed. There's just this gulf between the idea, we all know what needs to be done, how quickly can we get it done?
Well, can I just press that point then to say, when I've talked to venue operators, one of the things they say on outdoor dining is, in normal times, an application to do this is just never going to happen, particularly for outdoor performance. It's just not possible to make it through the thicket of regulations between state and local government. Do you, how possible is it to crash through this quickly? And how important is that?
Do you want to start, Sean or John?
Yeah, technology waiting to unmute. You're absolutely right, John. I think that, obviously, we have red tape hurdles to get through in relation to planning laws, et cetera, to gain approval. We recently saw a situation where down around the rocks, they halved George Street and utilised that area. We're able to use that for outdoor dining along half of George Street in the rocks because it was under the control of place management in New South Wales. There are burdens in place that are part of the planning laws. What we saw during the beginning of this, and Carl mentioned it before, we actually saw liquor and gaming use a statement of regulatory intent that allowed venues who couldn't otherwise serve takeaway to serve takeaway and pretty much to find out during the shutdown period. I'd be interested in investigating whether we could do something similar in relation to planning laws that would allow expediting the, you know, utilisation and quicker approval for the outdoor areas that the task force is talking about. Now, the government and agency task force, the liquor and gaming and police that was announced earlier this week, hopefully that is something that they'll be able to examine. I know that the roads ministry is involved, and that is the agency that needs to be associated with, because under the roads act, that's the section that approves for outdoor dining, indoor dining.
Carl?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add. There is a real burden to go through any of the regulations, and a lot of our members would just don't bother because it is so onerous.
Michael?
Yeah, look, it's not my area of expertise, but as I understand it, there are currently no guidelines on using transport for New South Wales roads for public dining. So, you know, I don't know where you sort of start with that. I don't know if I can ask myself to take a question on notice, but I'm...
Would you mind taking that on notice, Mike?
Yeah, I'll take that one on notice, and I'm hoping to submit a letter to the inquiry, if I'm allowed to do that afterwards, with a case study speaking specifically to this issue and the level of frustrations and time and costs involved under the current regime for what should be a relatively simple matter.
Well, one thing that local government in New South Wales said in the opening session was that if we're going to have to rely on having individual businesses, putting individual DAs to extend their opening hours, that that's just not going to work. And they were supportive, local government in New South Wales were supportive of a planning regime, changes to the planning regime that empowered local councils to extend opening hours without requiring individual DAs. And I assume that's something that the industry would support.
I think that's fair. But I, and again, it's not my area, but it does seem to me to be that the, and this task force hopefully will come to this conclusion, that there needs to be some general exemption, and then you start retrofitting the restrictions as opposed to, let's try and unpick every restriction, because it's going to take some time across all those different government departments, you've got to say.
Carl or Sean or John, what do you think about that proposal?
Yes, look, as Mr Green mentioned in his earlier remarks, it's a very unique time, and in the ordinary course of affairs, you know, blanket planning, composed DEs across the board would be otherwise somewhat of a controversial proposition. We say, given the situation we find ourselves in, as Mr Rodriguez said, some sort of blanket process that can then be assessed and analysed on a retrofitted basis is something we absolutely support, particularly as we've been saying all along in the context of outdoor dining, utilising those outdoor spaces. Clearly, and again, you know, the, we're saying everybody has been using quite a bit, I'm not with epidemiologists, but we're hearing that the evidence does suggest that outdoor spaces are safer spaces, and we do really need to focus on utilising those outdoor spaces with a minimum, but a degree, but a minimum of regulatory restraint in that regard.
Carl? Oh, sorry, you go.
Sorry, sorry, just while we were unmuted. I had the conversation with Leader Scott previously when we were looking at the level of local government support when we first had the issue, and that is that individual councils have control, and that's where it's going to be a collective or a high rule that actually looks across the board and allows the venues across New South Wales to have individual application.
Carl?
Yeah, I agree. A blanket process is needed, and I also want to comment that many of the operators get the situation we're in now and would comply or not try and go outside of those conditions if it was to be put through in a blanket process.
I'll go to Ms Kate Ferman, then to you, Natalie.
Thank you. I just wanted to just touch on the complexities around kind of noise complaints, if you like, now in terms of, you know, we'll see more outdoor dining, rooftop dining, and balancing that with the expected increase from residents around some of these businesses. I heard from a number of business owners after the lockdown laws were relaxed on the 1st of June, that quite soon after opening and having people back in courtyards and what have you in bars and pubs, that complaints started rolling in again, which, from a personal perspective, I think, given the huge numbers of job losses in the hospitality industry, I do feel like we've all had to sacrifice a little bit, and potentially people who are thinking that there's a noisy courtyard can potentially, you know, maybe think about that as well. But did you, have you heard, would you confirm that that's been the case from your members? Has, I just wanted to see how, have people relaxed a little bit in terms of accepting that, you know, we need to keep things going, or have they clamped down because they're at home, or what's your experience? I'll go to Mike.
I don't have any strong anecdotes or specific cases, but one thing I would observe is that, and you've struck the right question, isn't it? It's this balance piece, and the thing is that you can always frame things in terms of Sydney property prices, because if, what we are seeing is generally communities wanting to support each other, and so, you know, so in any neighbourhood that you live, a cafe alongside the park is a good thing. If you want the cafe to survive, you know, maybe allow it to serve a glass of wine occasionally, like, and a bit of noise is okay, it's something you can live with. And I think that the, what I'm trying to make is that consumer sentiment is changing rapidly at the moment around this, and I, you know, I think we just, I'd like to encourage government to be more proactive, really, and put the onus back onto the complainant again.
Yeah, roll with it a bit. Carl, and then Sean and John?
Yeah, we haven't received any direct feedback about noise complaints. I think there's a general attitude that everyone's sort of supporting their local community and going along for the ride. I can take it on notice and further investigate, if you like.
Oh, that's actually good to hear, though, Carl, you saying that, because it... Because it, yeah, it's good for the members to hear potentially that people are relaxing a bit around it. That's good from my perspective.
Yeah, and we're not asking you to hunt for complaints, Carl. It's not necessary. Sean and John?
Yeah, okay. So, look, obviously if COVID had not hit, then in the last 12 months, we've seen the work of the Upper House Inquiry. And obviously Natalie and John have been heavily involved in that. Natalie alongside using the work of both all sides, Ben Franklin, all sides of parliament all came together and pretty much said, you know, we're in a new age here where, guess what? If you live near a licensed venue of various designs, then people will go to the venue, they'll go away from the venue, they'll be at the venue, they might listen to a band, they might be in their beer garden, people might actually enjoy themselves and talk about their day. So there is a level of sound that is associated with licensed venues. And people living in and around licensed venues should expect a reasonable amount of noise. And so that's the work that was done. And we were just coming out of that planning, the future which the liquor bill identifies and removes a level of music-related conditions, et cetera, from liquor licenses. So we've got pretty much the roadmap out. I think we just need to now implement what is in that liquor bill. We need to acknowledge the fine work of the government and parliament in saying, right, now is the time to act. Now, people need to acknowledge that, yeah, licensed venues, there will be a level of noise. You need to expect reasonable sound from those venues. And the sound of people laughing and having a good time is the cost of living near a venue. Enjoy it.
Thanks. Look, Carl, for the record, I'll acknowledge the work of my colleague on behalf of the Greens, Kate Ferman, in that process as well.
One more, sorry. I just have, we have appearing later today, the Alliance for Gambling Reform. So I do just have to take this opportunity to ask the AHA, after the 1st of June, statistics showed that quite a few people flocked into pubs and clubs to access poker machines, quite a few more, I think, than the previous year at that same time. I just wanted, I was wondering if you could outline, what are the COVID-safe plans for gaming rooms in pubs?
Thank you, Kate. Now, just ensure that I've got the relevant COVID-safe plan in front of me. There are a range of measures relating to hygiene, cleaning and physical distancing that effectively apply across the venue broadly, whether that be in the food and beverage service area or indeed in the gaming room. They principally relate to the key principle of social distancing, ensuring 1.5 metres between patrons within the venue. There is an exclusion within those safety plans relating to close contacts and household contacts. And of course, there are a range of requirements relating to hygiene and cleaning across the venue again more broadly, be that the gaming room, food and beverage areas, bathrooms particularly, adopting hand hygiene practices and frequent cleaning of high-touch surfaces.
Thank you. Sorry, I can hear my echo coming back from you. So are there, I'm conscious then, with COVID-safe plans generally, say, being developed for theatre, for stadiums, for restaurants, for workplaces even, there's a general expectation that people are really only in those places for, say, two hours. You know, most restaurant bookings I've been making, for example, are only two hours. We know that the potential for COVID-19 infections or transmission, I think, increases over time. Are there time limits therefore for people using poker machines now as a result of COVID? And it's a genuine question. I'm not sure if there are.
No, no, of course. No, and again, looking at the safety plan in relation to attendance in any area of the venue, including gaming rooms, there are no time limits. As I said, whether that be in the gaming room or any other area of the venue. But looking indeed at any COVID-safety plan for any industry, there aren't any time limits that I'm aware of, to the best of my knowledge, that exists. The only time limit that I'm aware of that was in place in any jurisdiction upon reopening was, as I understand it, Northern Territory when they first reopened, which was before everybody else. There was a, I believe, a time limit on attendance at the venue. That was in place for the first week or two. However, that has not been in place in any other jurisdiction or across any other industry to my knowledge.
Thank you, I can come back if...
I'm sure we could do more on this, but I'm going to go to Ms Natalie Ward.
Thank you, Chair. The opportunity to, thank you to all of the witnesses for your contribution for coming today, but also particularly to your members for their persistence and through this extremely difficult time. I have a couple of questions, but you just referred to another jurisdiction. And that led me to one of my questions, which is about how we compare in context with other states. I know that we were able to reopen on 1 June. And I just wanted to get some feedback. And that was in spite of, and stay open, sorry, open on 1 June, stay open despite that Crossroads Hotel outbreak. And I just wanted to ask how your members are going in terms of employment and revenue compared to their counterparts in other states?
Thank you, Natalie.
No, you start, you start, Sean and John.
Thank you. Yes, as I mentioned earlier there, and as you said, Natalie, the first jurisdiction opening was positive and was quite early in the piece compared to some other jurisdictions. We had that one to four-square metre rule that was in place. Some other jurisdictions that have lower, for example, Western Australia as an example, later moved to the one to two-square metres more rapidly. Natalie, again, as you mentioned, the spike in infections across New South Wales in about mid-July did lead to the winding back of some of those measures. And we did have those patron caps, the 300 patron cap imposed. The group booking, which was at the time 20 patrons, which is now 10 patrons. So we have seen that fluctuation. And in fact, the winding back of some of those measures that were in place in response to that spike in infections that occurred off the back of the Victorian outbreak.
But compared to your approach now to opening in South Wales, I think that even with all its changes and restrictions, that probably left them in a better position than their counterparts in other states where they were not able to reopen as early or stay open during outbreaks. Would you agree with that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I think one of the key aspects of that has clearly been the contact tracing process that has been implemented in New South Wales, which the Prime Minister in fact referred to as the gold standard. And that is something that, you know, New South Wales Health and the government have been commended for, obviously. I do need to give our members a plug in that regard though, in the sense that they are at the coalface of that contact tracing process. And I could inform the committee, and I get some inquiries in relation to this. We have a number of QR code service providers. When you tap in at a venue, we were providing that service to our members. And across New South Wales, in hotels in New South Wales since the 1st of June, I'm advised that there've been well over 6 million unique individual logins and registrations, which are timestamped, which are date-stamped, and which create that framework around that contact tracing process, which is very critical. So that's something that we're extremely proud of in terms of the role that we've been able to play in that process.
Carl or Michael, have you had any of that interstate comparisons that you could assist us with?
I, if I can take this one on notice, I can come back with some, I'm positive some good data from one of our members, Australian Venue Co., who transact across all states and territories. So I think that'd be, I'll undertake to that.
Thank you. So the comparison for employment and revenue and numbers. Thank you. I also wanted to ask about the outdoor dining. And I don't know if you're aware, but there's a Frisco Task Force, which is currently in place to look at exactly those outdoor dining issues. So I don't know if you're aware of that, but hopefully that can actually quickly then come back, get some clarity about the outdoor dining. But it's one of those wonderful things. I just wanted to also ask about the other forms of government support and whether that's been useful. I'm not looking for compliments for the sake of it, but I actually understand how it's worked in terms of the economic support, such as the waiving of licensing fees. Can you comment on that and other initiatives, if they've been helpful? And if so, how, if not, how they could be improved?
I'm just going to arbitrarily pick an order. So I'll ask to go Michael, then Carl, then Sean and John.
Yeah, I think that everyone's been positive about the ambition for the support. Accessing the support is of course a different matter. And I think that particularly for the small, medium businesses who don't necessarily have the scale or sophistication, being able to apply for grants of small amounts has just not been time-effective, particularly at the height of the crisis. So I think that the support hasn't manifested equally. And as I sort of remarked at the beginning, that will result in a greater level of insolvency at the small, medium end of things. It's been a good learning process, I think, for the smaller operators to better engage with various levels of government and understand and develop the muscle set needed to try and access government support. And I think that the better operators have been able to take advantage of things as a result.
Carl?
This doesn't look like a grant answer, by anything of licensing fees. Did you remember that for, you might want to take it on notice if it's there.
Yeah, sorry, Natalie, we'll just get your first question to Carl and then Sean and John. Carl?
Yeah, so the feedback that we've got, the grant from Service New South Wales, that process was quite easy to navigate. But when looking at grants offered by local government councils, it's quite, the level of detail required for them. A lot of the small business, our members just found that too difficult to process and just gave up on it. And in regards to the licensing fees, our licensing fees are only $200 a year. So it's welcome, but yes, I'll give the ocean.
That's not going to keep you afloat, is it, Carl? Sean and John?
Yes, again echoing those earlier comments, the various measures at both the state and federal level, their job keep for all the small business grants. Natalie, of course, the license fee relief. That for our members, the license fee relief represented in the order of about $6 million just for hotels in New South Wales. That's obviously very welcome. There are, however, the reality of the, that I referred to in my opening remarks, is that as those measures wind back, the rates still keep holding. The land tax still keeps climbing up. And there is going to come a point, obviously, when the courts are possibly going to look, well, not possibly, certainly going to look a lot more closely at various spending profiles and arrangements in place with businesses when those relief measures do eventually dry up. So very low for measures across the board. However, very much measures which only goes some way towards assisting venues keeping their head above water. And I suspect and fear that that will only grow as a challenge as time goes on. And just in terms of ideas, like obviously grants sometimes are cash in hand, but our businesses and all our businesses, whether it's small, whether it's NTIA members or ours, they just want to do what is their occupation. They just want to be businesses operating. And so an idea that has been flagged by our Tourism Accommodation Australia Chair, Michael Johnson, in recent days across Australia, is actually the concept of where rather than a grant, it's actually a voucher for accommodation or food in areas that are being hit by COVID where you register and you go to the funding that is government-funded in those venues. That is to kickstart while our employment and those venues can kick along.
Well, I'm now going to go to...
If I might just to follow up on that, in terms of proactivity, I think somebody mentioned, you know, they'd like to say more proactivity. And I think one of you mentioned there's the summer summit, the 24-hour economy strategy, the liquor amendment bill and the industry advisory group. Have you had a chance to have input to those with a suggestion like that?
Again, our CEO, John Willman, attended that summer summit this morning. And he's only just come back and brought it back to us. So I've been talking to him about what he was able to put to that. And he actually, actually my information is that he actually did get an opportunity to propose that at that summer summit this morning. So it's a fairly big concept that we've been pushing a long period.
He's not exactly sure of the wording, but yeah, no, it's good. If they haven't had a chance, that they should and if not, put it through us.
Well, I'm now, I am now going to hand over to questioning to Matthew Mason-Cox. He's been extremely patient.
Oh, he is. Thank you, Chair. And look, gentlemen, it's good to see you all. Thanks for joining us. I just wanted to ask you a bit about the commercially viable and sustainable social distancing rules, indeed the roadmap out of this. And I presume the two person per square metre is obviously a first step that you'd welcome. You also mentioned...
One person per two square metres.
One person per, yeah, sorry, one per two square metre. But you also mentioned the actual loan support. And I wanted to understand also, in that context, do you think government should consider a different sort of pathway in regional areas as opposed to city areas?
I'll take that first, shall I? So I think that there's, one of the challenges is a lot of venues are different. And so coming up with, you know, an exact formula probably requires some discussion. Revenue models across venues, and then other general will speak to this, can vary depending on whether you're a cocktail bar, a fast takeaway, you know, a large cell fine dining establishment, they're very different. So, but generally speaking, the argument that we would put forward is that given low community transmission, these factors, one, there's low rates of community transmission, two, the sector, even though there will be losses, has been through a process of open, shut, open, shut and adjustment. And what this means is, we would say, in conjunction with good contact tracing, the sector has now built an ability to test newer models. And if it's not working, then move back a bit from that if there is an outbreak. So, and I think, so the argument surely has to be that these businesses have been designed specifically to bring people together and in. And if we're not seeing rates of community transmission, then that rule has to be like further interrogated. I can't necessarily speak to the regional matter, but I understand the principle. I think that a degree of flexibility, what venues need is the flexibility to allow their business models to trade the way they're designed to trade fundamentally. And so in, there's examples of different regions in Victoria being under different rules to the city. And I think that that's something that the discussion in New South Wales would benefit from.
Carl or Sean and John?
Yeah, thanks, Kate. The one per four-square-metre rule is crippling. And we would encourage the one per two-square metre. But also, given the size of our venues, the social distancing, if you did go to the one per two-square metre, we still wouldn't be, some venues still wouldn't be able to put extra people in the venue due to social distancing.
Yeah.
There's the feedback we get from a lot of our members that would be happy to continue to have everyone seated and mingling not happening. Most of the patrons are adhering to those rules and they understand all the rules. And I don't have the expertise to comment on regional versus the city.
Sean, John?
Yes, again, looking at the one to four-square-metre rule, certainly the experience of our members is that that creates an extreme hindrance in terms of their ability to trade at really viable levels. Mid-July, we did, as we discussed earlier, see that wind back in the patron capacity in response to that spike in infections. But those measures haven't moved for some time. And we have seen thankfully very... moved for some time, and we have seen, thankfully, very low rates of infection. Matthew, in response to your particular question about regional areas, our members in the bush are screaming out naturally. It's a natural response. Many of those areas just haven't seen an infection, heard of an infection, or heard of anybody who has had an infection. And I think there is absolutely merit in terms of government looking to manage risks, to have that flexibility to look at it on a geographic basis, particularly in those areas west of the Great Divide, where there are next to no rates of infection. So we're certainly endorsing and would encourage that flexibility across different areas and different regions. And I think the one per two-square metres is a good example. Another very good example that we did see, as I mentioned, was the reduction in group bookings from 20 down to 10. There are possibly some inconsistencies that are there at the moment, where you see corporate events and corporate functions that can take place of up to 150 persons. As long as people are seated and at tables of 10, and if they don't come mingle and they don't come interact. But at the same time, two weeks ago, I couldn't have my mother-in-law's 80th birthday in front of the Cameron Valley Inn. So I think there's certainly an argument to be made, again, there, as I said, for some flexibility and some consistency across the board there.
Yeah, I think Trevor Khan has a clarifications.
My question, again, relates to the regional areas. And I put this in the context, if I attempt to go and visit my mother-in-law in a nursing home, I can't go in because of my contact in Sydney. So I stand outside regrettably and talk to her over offense. Now, that's the nature of that. I know, being from Tamworth, I'd have to say there would be a lot of support for your proposition. But I just wonder if in supporting the release or the relieving of some of those venue restrictions, there'd also be a desire to see there being a continuing restriction with regards to people from, for instance, out of Sydney from visiting those venues. Do you think there's actually more to it than simply changing the, I'll call it the floor space ratio?
In terms of the regions?
In terms of the regions, yeah.
Yeah, Trevor, absolutely. And I mean, obviously, that's something that we need to, as always, be guided by the health experts and public health experts around the logistics of that. It's absolutely a challenge and absolutely a reality, as you rightly point out. I'd agree.
John Graham has some questions.
I've just got one final issue I wanted to touch on, and perhaps particularly to the AHA, although if anyone else wants to jump in, feel free to. We've all got used to a fair bit of peace and quiet during the COVID period. But the parliament's about to debate the 24-hour economy bill, which makes some changes to noise regulation. It's in two areas. It's the question about removing the bans and restrictions on music in licences, but not in development approvals. And also, secondly, changing the nature of liquor and gaming's role in regulating noise. I just wondered if there was a view about those changes in particular, and the impact they have on venues?
Thanks, John. Obviously, the liquor bill in relation to noise has a lot of recommendations that are from the Upper House Inquiry. We see that, yeah, there are significant red tape issues, I think I alluded to before, where removing a range of conditions from your liquor licence doesn't necessarily then remove them where they appear in your development consent that is approved by 147 or so local councils at that level under planning laws. Or you're sitting within a plan of management that a lot of venues have restrictions within that document that is a de facto licensed condition under planning laws. So there's definitely some further work that needs to be done to really be able to activate the recommendations from the Upper House Inquiry and through the liquor bill. The other aspect of what you've mentioned is that, yes, we are removing liquor and gaming in New South Wales from investigating in-venue noise complaints, but they will still be investigating the sound that people will obviously make as they approach the venue and leave the venue. And there's still a lot of risks in the henhouse in relation to, you know, police, local council, the EPA, still investigating noise. So there's still a range of work to be done. And as you've identified, there needs to be an acknowledgement at this point in time, that venues need to be allowed to have a reasonable amount of activity in and around their venues and inside their venues as we move forward. And particularly during standard trading hours, that just needs to be considered.
Did miss three of the agencies who also have noise regulatory responsibilities there, but I won't hold it against you.
Karl or Michael?
I don't really have any.
Yeah, I'd strongly agree with John's statement.
Well, look, thanks all of you for your attendance today and your evidence. There is a repeating theme of urgency that we're getting from every single participant we've had in the hearings to date. And I think that message is coming across loud and clear. So thank you very much. We will take a brief lunch break. Thanks.
Thank you.